Good evening. The August 25th, 2016 Longview City Council would not be called to order. Can you believe it's August the 25th? Can you believe we're having rain? God is good. Tonight, our prayer and pledge will be led by Dr. Tim Watson with Luton University, the Business and Ethics Professor. Dr. Watson.
Father, we thank you so much tonight for the privilege to convene this business. What a privilege it is to live in a great city like Longview, Texas. I pray your peace and blessings upon this city council tonight that you'd give them wisdom and discernment as they make decisions for the good of our community. I pray that they would be a voice for the voiceless, for those who cannot speak for themselves, that they would be spokesmen and spokeswomen. Pray for our, both of our chiefs in fire and police, that you'll watch over those that are first responders in our community. We again just thank you for the freedoms that we enjoy in this great country, the United States of America. We pray in your holy name, amen.
Amen.
Join me in the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Watson, thank you very much. Pastor Tim was my pastor at First Baptist Church for many, many years, and no one can preach a sermon like Pastor Tim Watson. I can guarantee you that. Wonderful man. Thank you, sir. Our employee recognition tonight. We're going to recognize a committee from our city. The city of Longview is a pace setter organization for the greater Longview United Way. Each year, to kick off the city's United Way campaign, they have a benefits fair for all city employees. The benefits fair serves not only as a way to raise money for the United Way, but also serves as an opportunity to bring all 860-plus employees together at one time for fellowship. Lunch is provided for the employees at the fair, as well as a chance to meet and talk to vendors who provide benefits for our city employees, as well as United Way agencies. This year, there were 52 vendors in attendance. A committee of city employees works diligently each year to put this fair on. Our directors take turns serving as the chairperson of the benefits fair committee. This year's committee was made up of Chief Mike Bishop, y'all please come forward, who was our chairperson this year, Lee Lloyd, Bonnie Newman, Katie Fisher, Leisha Kidbrooks, Gail Cockerell, and Laura Starling. Imagine you being in front. I don't know how many of y'all attended the fair, but I was able to attend this year, and it is such a great sight to see all of our city employees together in an area, in an arena, where they can relax, they can have a lunch, they can enjoy themselves, but also to see the vendors come out to support those employees. Because when the vendors come out, it just shows that they care about our city, and that they care about our employees, and I guarantee you, every single employee deserves that. They put their heart and soul into their jobs, and I don't know if y'all have noticed, but our city employees are the backbone of our community, and they are your servants and our servants, and they do a phenomenal job each and every day. So I am so pleased that this is able to be put on, and that you all took the time from your busy, busy schedules to put this together and make it such a successful event, because it was phenomenal. I was overwhelmed. It was a lot bigger this year than it was last year. And so, keep it up. It just shows that you all take the time to recognize the ones in our city, and we take the time to recognize you for your work. So thank you all very, very much. We appreciate you for all that you do, for our community, for the employees of the city of Longview. Thank you. I don't know how many of y'all have ever thrown a dinner party for 10 or 12 people. Throw one for 860, and you'll see what it takes to put that on. So, job well done, city of Longview. We have citizen comment now. I have one speaker card. Pastor Lila Jackson.
Good evening. I'm Pastor Lila Jackson. I had my helper to pass out what I'm doing.
Pastor Jackson, would you please state your address for us, please?
Address is 2398 South Main Street.
Thank you.
Longview, Texas. What I'm attempting to do in Longview, with the help of God, is to help alleviate some of the crime that's in our city. What I'm bringing to you all is a youth in action program, and what I want to do is be able to go to the neighborhoods on the south side of town and help clean them up. We want to clean up the yards that's highly growed up. We want to tear down houses. And then, we want to turn around like Habitat and rebuild homes, so we can have a better neighborhood. We don't want to just do it because it's something to do. We want to take the young men that's on the streets. We know this is a hard task, but nothing is too hard for God. And we want to be able to bring them into some jobs, into their fit to go on a normal job. We have a lot of young people that's on drugs, drinking, running the streets, doing all kinds of stuff, no education. But we want to bring something to them, put them on a job. We want to be able to pay them some money. Each day, we put them out there to clean up, so they realize they don't have to sell drugs and do things like that for a living. None of us is perfect. We all have made mistakes. We always once young. Now we're old. But this is our city, and I'm proud to be from Longview, Texas. I'm proud that I grew up in this city. Yes, I made mistakes when I was young. I made wrong choices. But we have to take these kids where they are and work with them. After I do what I'm doing, then I want to put them in classes, or send them to school, teach them skills. We can't just throw them away. They're our future. And that's all I'm asking. I'm asking the city, would you consider a resolution of $5,000 to help set us on our feet? Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor. I have no other speaker cards. Would anyone else care to speak and fill out a card later? Very well. Thank you. Presentation items. Councilmember Ishihara has a presentation to the Marguerite Drive Neighborhood Rescue Team.
Thank you, Mayor Mack. If you live on Marguerite Drive, come on down. Whether you're getting honored or not, please come on up here, everybody. Okay. Thank you so much, all, for being here tonight. So, Marguerite Drive is a neighborhood that is in my district, and about a year ago, we all remember when Longview was hit with an F-2 tornado. There were several neighborhoods in my district that were impacted, but Marguerite Drive probably the most so. We had several, we had several serious damaged homes in that area, along with all sorts of other property damage. So, we wanted tonight to honor many of those residents on Marguerite Drive that went above and beyond in that particular time period, and then others. I think most council members up here probably have a neighborhood that's in their district that they can think of when someone asks them about a tight-knit, always has a national night out party, works together really well, just supports each other, and goes above and beyond to be that type of neighborhood that families want to live in. So, I would like to thank you all for being that neighborhood, and then we have some special recognition tonight. So, on April 9th, 2015, the Marguerite Drive area, as well as others, experienced an F-2 tornado, causing major destruction to several homes on the street. One home that was totally destroyed was the home of Phyllis Taunton, sorry, and Phyllis is with us tonight, right? Phyllis was trapped due to the tree that had fallen directly through the middle of her home. Three brave men risked their lives to enter her home and bring her to safety. It is David Fryerson, Dennis Lentz, and Ben Shepard that we honor tonight as community heroes for their service to the community and help to their neighbors. Thank you all for your service. John Clemmons, Will Dooley, and Chris Parker also went door-to-door checking on the safety of their neighbors immediately following the tornado, and we are grateful for each of their individual efforts. Tonight, we also recognize Brenda Lanier, who with her husband, Jack, have headed up the Neighborhood Crime Watch and National Night Out Parties for many years. Ms. Lanier was providing assistance to one of her neighbors, who had a dead car battery that needed a boost, when that neighbor suffered cardiac arrest. Brenda, who is a retired registered nurse and CPR instructor, was able to perform CPR and sustain her life until the Longview Fire Department arrived. We are grateful for each of our community heroes living on Marguerite, grateful for your service, and proud to have you as Longview residents and our neighbors. Thank you all so much. We really appreciate you.
Thank you all so much for all that you've done for the community and for your neighborhoods. We appreciate your service and your community support. Thank you all very, very much. We're tonight at the consent agenda. Is there any items the council would like to pull off for separate consideration?
Not to pull off. I have a couple of questions, though, Mayor, if I might.
Please.
Ms. Cohen, the item C, the sales tax analysis contract, I note that they offer some compliance services, and as I recall, several months ago, you told me that they were instrumental in getting some Netflix transactions credited properly to Longview rather than another city. I recently bought a Kindle book on Amazon, one time, Mayor, that I didn't shop local, okay? But I was charged the full eight-and-a-quarter percent sales tax, so some community is getting that percent in half. Will these folks help us maybe track down those type transactions, and maybe some online sales for some of our big box stores? Is that part of their service profile?
Yes, sir. Part of the contract is that they identify companies that are mistakenly paying other jurisdictions, and they do identify internet sales, and amazon.com is one of them, so, yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief Bishop. About how much does it, on the body cams that we're getting ready to approve, about how much does it cost to outfit each officer?
Each individual camera costs about $540 for the camera.
And so, given the grant we received, and the local donations we've received, how many officers are we going to be able to outfit initially?
We're going to be able to purchase 123 cameras totally. That's going to outfit all of the officers that are in the front line of enforcement, that are out there answering calls for service, conducting traffic stops, and things of that nature.
But our ultimate goal is to outfit every officer?
Eventually, yeah. We'll have to purchase, you know, maybe some replacement cameras, you know, things of that nature.
Okay. But this particular contract will outfit the front line?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
But if I'm not correct, we don't need 172 cameras, and everybody's on the streets at the same time. That's enough for our officers that are on the streets, correct?
Right. Just those that'll be out there, you know, on the front lines.
Right. We don't need them for a take-home project, so.
And we will, we may assign some to detectives for field interviews and things of that nature, so.
And we are good with our grant and the donation from our wonderful citizen, Tom Chin, correct?
Yes, that's going to cover everything.
Thank you very much, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Dupree, seven.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. To show you guys how important y'all are, the minute I skipped over public safety update, the whole council erupted. You forgot the public safety update! Okay, sorry. Chief Bishop.
All right. Mayor Mack, Council, Mr. Bonds. One last call for our Citizens Police Academy. We're getting close to starting September 8th. We have just a few seats available. If you're interested, we'd love to have you come learn more about your police department. We'll meet on Tuesdays and Thursdays from 6:15 to 8:15 at the police department. If you'd like more information on that, you can go to longviewtexas.gov/cpa to obtain an application, and we'd love to have you. Another reminder for our National Night Out kickoff party, that'll be Tuesday, September 6th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Mod Cobb. Like to encourage everybody to come out. Sign up your neighborhood for a Neighborhood Watch Party. We'll have food and drinks and vendors there. Be a good time for us to come together and get ready to kick off our National Night Out that comes up in October. Back a few months ago, I spoke to you about a crime analysis software package that the police department was in the process of purchasing. There's two different components to that software package that we're purchasing, and one of the ones that I talked about was Map Nimbus, and this was a public portion. It's a public mapping application that allows citizens access to important, relevant information about the different types of criminal activity that's occurring in the city and their neighborhoods. And some of the features and benefits of this particular part of the package is it allows an individual to do an address search, or find a particular location. It's accessible to use anywhere. There's an embedded link on the city and the police department's website. You can view incidents in a specific date range, graphical visualization and representation, and hopefully it'll provide an improved public awareness, potentially leading to reduced crime and improved quality of life in the neighborhoods. Earlier today, we released information that the public portion of this software package is now available for our citizens to use. They can get to that by going to the Longview Police Department's website at longviewpolice.com, and we have a special icon button here titled "Interactive Crime Mapping." They can click on that, and there will be a page here that will tell them a little bit about the interactive crime map. And over here on the left, there's a frequently asked questions that they can click on. There'll be a whole list of what the public portion will do. But just to do a quick, short demo, to get to the crime map, they can click on this link here, and it'll take us to that, to the program Map Nimbus, that will allow individuals to zoom into their particular area or neighborhood and see what type of criminal activity is occurring in there. The crimes that will be posted on the map are all listed on the left here, and you can go in and you can turn on or off the different types of crimes that are occurring. If you want to look at just specific ones, so, up here's a date range, so for the last month, if you want to see what, how many thefts or larcenies we've had, you can click on the map, and it'll bring up each different crime. If you hover over a particular crime, it will bring up a little bit of information about that particular offense that occurred. So, it will allow the citizens to see what's occurring, and then they can just go in and click on the different offense titles, and then the map will continue to add those in there. There's also a feature on here where they can create an account and set up an address, so that if something happens in, close to that address, within a half-mile, mile, five-mile radius, it'll send a message to the individual, letting them know that, hey, this event occurred somewhere close to your address that you had set up there. So I think this will be a good tool for our community to be able to, be able to see what is occurring in their neighborhoods and throughout the city. So with that, I'll answer any questions if anybody has any.
Chief, I really appreciate you following through on this. I know we talked about this last year, and it's been a long process, but we've had a number of citizens requesting this, and now I can see why. This is a very informative piece of equipment that we can all utilize at our discretion to keep us as updated as we want to be. It's almost like having your little police scanner we listen to all the time, you know? But it's really important that the citizens know that you guys hear what they're saying, and you act upon it, and I appreciate that very much.
Well, thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Did you say, I love the software, too, the alerts portion. Did you say within a five-mile radius?
I think there's different, within a mile, it'll give you different, some different options in there.
And are the par officers going to be rolling this out at the different crime watch meetings, like literally doing an educational, you know, type deal?
Yes, and we'll be talking about it at the National Night Out kickoff party, and certainly we'll do some information and hand that out at all our National Night Out parties, too.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Chief Tillman.
Mayor Mack, members of council, Mr. Bonds, thanks for the opportunity to update you on a few things that have been going on in the fire department since we last met. First and foremost, I've got to give a shout-out to this guy. This is Evan Crane. He's one of our newest firefighter paramedics. Evan graduated from Kilgore College Fire Academy last night, class number 98, and was the valedictorian of that class. So certainly proud of him for that accomplishment. That's three months of hard training, and we're ready to get him on board and get him over here to start helping us out at work, so certainly proud of him. On another note, as you're well aware, since the early 1990s, our fire department has maintained a fully functional hazardous materials team, and these guys are located out at Station 2 on Eastman Road. Part of the responsibility that goes along with maintaining the type of team to the level of training that we have is continued training. Earlier this week, we had a couple of our members of our special operations team attend SEBURN Training, and that stands for Chemical, Biological, Radiological, and Nuclear Training in Anniston, Alabama. I've actually had the opportunity to go several years ago, and this is some of the most realistic, real-time, live agent training. This is as close as to putting you in a real scenario as you can come. I mean, everything, the live agents that you're using will hurt you if you do things wrong, so it's very critical that they understand what they're doing. It's some great hands-on skills, maintenance, and, you know, just maintaining the level of response readiness that we want to have here in our community. And I'll remind you that not only are we the, pretty much, the designated hazmat team for the city of Longview, but we actually have agreements to respond anywhere in the 14-county ETCOG region. So there's a lot of people in our region of the state that are depending on us for this type of response. So just to give a quick shout-out to fire driver engineer Kirk Stroud and firefighter medic Logan Leckins, who are the two most recent graduates of this program at the Center for Domestic Preparedness. Another thing I'm very happy to report on, from time to time, as you know, because we run an ambulance service, we're regulated by the state, and sometimes that can bring some trials to a department. We had a surprise inspection on August 10th from the Department of State Health Services, who came in, and they just show up out of nowhere and say, hey, we're here to see if you're doing what you're supposed to be doing, kind of a thing. And I'm happy to report that other things that they evaluated of our department, our training records, our medical protocols, our ambulance readiness, and our medical equipment and supplies, we passed with flying colors. That's just a reassuring thing for the community to know that our EMS service is out there, they're ready, they're prepared to take care of your needs, and I've got to give a shout-out to our EMS section, Chief Hester and Captain Dodson, as well as all the men and women out there, the paramedics that are in the field delivering that service every day. Certainly thanks to them. Next week, on Wednesday, the 31st, we have a promotional ceremony, and you said by the list, we've got a large group of people that we're preparing to promote. So there's 14 people on there, and we're promoting anywhere from assistant fire chiefs to fire driver engineers. This event is open to the public. If you're free, feel free to come join us. We'll have some refreshments, as we honor these people that are taking the next step in their career to help make our department better. And once again, I'm going to keep hitting you with this, and although we haven't had any arson fires since we last met, we still have several ongoing investigations, and I'm happy to report that our Fire Marshal's Office is receiving trickling amounts of information that's coming in on some of these fires, that are giving them some leads to follow-up on. So I want the community to remain vigilant, and be sure that they report anything that looks funny in your neighborhoods. I mean, we've got to start taking care of one another and being on the lookout, and we want this to stop. So I want to thank the community, the ones that have come forward and provided those little bits of information that have given us some leads to follow, so thank them for that. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Chief, thanks for the education, all that you're doing for the community, and thank you for keeping us updated, but also I want to say thanks to the EMS, because, you know, that report of doing everything the way it's supposed to be is kind of like a restaurant report. You don't want to go eat where the restaurant report's bad. I don't want EMS come to get me if they don't have everything in line. So congratulations to you all. As expected, I knew that you would, but it's a wonderful report that you gave us.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have discussion on our budget. Mr. Bonds.
I do not have any formal presentation prepared, but I have all the people out here, they can answer questions if you have any.
Anyone have any question on the budget at this time? Very well. Thank you, sir. When I have a public hearing to consider the proposed tax rate, Ms. Cohen.
Good evening. This is the first of two required public hearings. The proposed tax rate is 50.99 cents per 100 valuation. The second public hearing will be held on September 1st, 2016, at 300 West Cotton.
The public hearing is now open. Are there any comments? Public hearing is now closed. Any questions, council? Very well. Thank you. We're now to action items. Consider the issue, the issuance of the sale of City of Longview General Obligation, Improvement and Refunding Bonds, Series 2016. Mr. John Martin, Hilltop Securities.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. John Martin with Hilltop Securities. With me tonight is my partner, Joey Durker, Dan Culver from McCall Parkhurst and Horton Law Firm, as your bond counsel. Two separate items, and I'm just, if you don't mind, I'll cover them both in the book all at once, just to kind of make it quick. We've provided this information for you to kind of give a quick overview. In this booklet has quite a bit of information. Behind tab 2, just to give you a little bit of a market update, this is the Bond Buyers Index, and you can see the trend has been very strong in terms of low rates for the last several months. This past week, this is valued at the close of business on Thursday of each week, when the market closes, 2.84% last Thursday, and it's been hanging in there in the 280 range for quite some time over the summertime here. So, great time to borrow money, as you'll see here what happened, and you all took full advantage of that. Again, this is just a general index to kind of give you a general idea where municipal tax exempt rates go nationwide. Behind that green sheet there is the first of two rating reports, talking about your general obligation bonds. The, I mean, this says Ratings Direct here, and what this is, is this is an overall report and comment as to your credit rating on your general obligation bonds assigned by Standard and Poor's. We use two rating agencies for your GO bonds. You have Standard and Poor's and Fitch Ratings. S&amp;P affirmed your AA+ rating. The best you can possibly get is AAA, so AA+ is fantastic. They also have an outlook. Our outlook has been, in the past, is a stable outlook. Right now, they did change that from stable to negative. As you read this report, you'll see that the city, you all, as elected officials and your management, has done everything you can possibly do to keep your rating and financially manage. You see all these things, very strong management, very strong budgetary flexibility. Goes on and on about that. But it talks about the concern over the overall local economy, the effective buying power of the dollars in our area right now, and it's just, sales taxes dropped and so forth, and the impact of that. So, there is concern. They're just saying, we're going to watch this for a little bit and see what happens, so hopefully things will bounce, give us a good positive bounce, and we'll get back on track here. Nothing that the city has done, so it should not be considered as a slap at you all at all, so that's just overall things that you don't have control over. all at all, so that's just overall things that you don't have control over. Again, it's a good report and it's very positive. It very commends, uh, the city in terms of the way that you all, uh, manage your funds and, and, um, your budget and so forth. It goes on and on about that. The report behind that is from Fitch Ratings. Uh, it's not as intense as the S and P, uh, but it also provides some very good information. Again, they talk about, uh, the operating performance, uh, being superior, um, and that strong expenditure flexibility and high independent revenue raising ability, uh, goes on and on about the budget management and so forth. So, uh, all very good. There is then a green sheet back behind there, and then they talk about the water and sewer system, which, uh, speaks to item B here. Um, and the water and sewer system, very strong. Uh, we've come a long way in this fund over the last five years, um, that, uh, we now have very strong coverage of all our debt service. In other words, revenues versus, uh, overall expenditures, particularly the ability to pay debt. So, uh, they also see the fact that you really don't have a lot of debt and you really don't anticipate issuing a lot of debt for water and sewer. You all built up funds and you're doing a pay-as-you-go method, which is a credit positive in their eyes. So that's the rating reports. Now to the meat and potatoes of the program. The, uh, I'll turn you behind tab three, and first we'll talk about the, the, uh, tax, the, the GO bonds, and this is for the six mil, eight million dollars of remaining authorization for streets and bridges. And we've also taken advantage of lower interest rates where we're going to refund those bonds. So, um, the first page shows you the sources and uses of funds, where the city will issue about 14.9 million dollars, and that will be used as below, you can see, we're going to put eight million dollars in the project fund for streets and bridges, and then, uh, close to nine million dollars will be used, uh, to, uh, refund, uh, several series of bonds, or excuse me, just the '09 bonds that, um, are going to be redeemed in the, in 2018. The maturities 19 through 25. So the next page shows you your overall debt, shows yours, your existing debt service, the bonds that are being refunded, and how these are going to be replaced in your new debt service. So, um, you can see that your overall debt service for, uh, tax-supported debt is actually going to go down from last year to this year, even with the new bonds coming online. Good planning. There's some information behind that, uh, that talks about how the bonds were sold, shows you the pricing report, also gives you a detail of the costs of issuance involved. Behind tab four now is the water and sewer piece, and this was just for pure savings to the water and sewer. There's not any new money, uh, here, so we're looking to refund, um, the, um, 2007, uh, revenue bonds, water and sewer system revenue bonds. So behind that sheet, the sideways page shows you, if you look at the far right-hand column, you can see that we're going to be saving about $90,000 a year, um, and that'll total up to about a million 120. So, pretty nice little bit of savings, um, about 10% of the, uh, versus the, uh, what you have been going, so your cost of funds is going to go from 4.47% to 1.84% in the, for, for that particular, uh, part of your overall debt service. And finally, uh, if, uh, the last behind tab four, after you're finished with any questions you might have for me or Mr. Durker or Mr. Culver, we've given you suggested form of motion back behind. We've also provided, uh, we also have with us, uh, some additional copies of the offering document, if you all would be interested in seeing that. Uh, we did not include that in the report because they're relatively thick.
Counsel, any questions for Mr. Martin?
Sir, um, so all these new rates are locked-in rates?
They're absolutely fixed rates, yes, sir.
Great.
John? It doesn't appear that the negative outlook affected our pricing at all. Do you concur with that?
I would concur with that, particularly being a tax-back type deal, and, um, you get in that double A category and it's very strong.
Yeah, good. Any other comments? May I have a motion to approve the general obligation improvement and refunding bonds, Series 2016?
Shall move.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion to approve Water Works and Sewer System Revenue Refunding Bonds, Series 2016?
Shall move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consider resolution authorized City of Staff to acquire certain property in the Hamilton McNutt Survey, A dash 129, Mr. Mcfee.
Mayor, City Council, Mr. Bonds, I just wanted to, uh, make a brief statement about this. We brought these before you, and they were tabled. Unfortunately, we were not able to reach a successful resolution, so unfortunately, I have to read a few motions that I would ask that one of you make and approve the following motions. The first of which is, I would like to ask that you move that the City of Longby, Longview authorize the use of the power of eminent domain to acquire certain property in the Hamilton McNutt Survey, A dash 129, City of Longview, Gregg County, Texas. Said property consisting of a parcel of land of approximately 502.4 square feet. Parcel 2014 H dash 005, along with the temporary construction easement consisting of approximately 500 square feet. Parcel 2014 T dash 001. All of said parcels being a portion of the same tract of land, being part of the called Lot 5, NCB 126, conveyed from Dr. Richard O. Dorch to Randy Ritt and Linda Ritt by the deed recorded in volume 2485, page 206. Public official records, Gregg County, Texas. Said tract, said parcel, and said temporary construction easement, all being more particularly described in attachment A of the resolution before you tonight, for the purpose of constructing both a public roadway, rebuilding Cotton Street, and certain associated public improvements, including without limitation, public drainage improvements, public sanitary sewer improvements, and public water pipeline improvements.
Move to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Mcfee, through the resolution authorized City of Staff to acquire property on the Alexander Jordan Survey, A dash 262.
If you'll bear with me a couple more times, I'd like to ask that you make and approve the following motion. I move that the City of Longview authorize the use of the power of eminent domain to acquire certain property in the Alexander Jordan Survey, A dash 262, City of Longview, Gregg County, Texas. Said property consisting of a parcel of land of approximately 2,624 square feet. Parcel 2014 dash H dash 032, along with the drainage easement consisting of approximately 9.49 square feet. Parcel 2014 D dash 004, and a temporary construction easement consisting of approximately 2,322 square feet. Parcel 2014 T dash 002. All of said parcels being a portion of the same tract, which was called Point 854 acre tract 1, conveyed from East Cotton Street Church of Christ to Randy Ritt and Linda Ritt by the deed recorded in file 2009, 22921. Official records, public records, Gregg County, Texas. Said tract, said parcel, said drainage easement, and said temporary construction easement, all being more particularly described in attachment A of the resolution before you tonight, for the purpose of constructing both a public roadway, rebuilding Cotton Street, and certain associated public improvements, including without limitation, public drainage improvements, public sanitary sewer improvements, and public water pipeline improvements.
Move to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And now, resolution authorized City of Staff to acquire certain property in the M.D. Greer Survey, A dash 83, Mr. Mcfee.
Once again, I'd like to ask that you make and approve the following motion. I move that the City of Longview authorize the use of the power of eminent domain to acquire certain property in the M.D. Greer Survey, A dash 83, City of Longview, Gregg County, Texas. Said property consisting of a parcel of land of approximately 806.3 square feet. Parcel 2014 H dash 045, along with the temporary construction easement consisting of approximately 737.7 square feet. Parcel 2014 T dash 003. All of said parcels being a portion of the same tract, which was called Point 17 acre tract, conveyed from Brent A. Edens to Randy Ritt and Linda Ritt by the deed recorded in file 2009, 22391. Official public records, Gregg County, Texas. Said tract, said parcel, and said temporary construction easement, all being more particularly described in attachment A of the resolution before you tonight, for the purpose of constructing both a public roadway, rebuilding Cotton Street, and certain associated public improvements, including without limitation, public drainage improvements, public sanitary sewer improvements, and public water pipeline improvements.
Move to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Mcfee. We are to items of community interest. Mr. Moore?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Ms. Snoddy?
I do have something. I think I have a slide. Great. Uh, once again, guys, it's that time of year again, we're getting ready to do our second annual, um, CPR initiative in Snapper Park, so we're asking that you guys come out and have lots of fun and food and festivities with us on September 3rd, uh, from 8 o'clock until approximately 8:00 PM that evening. So hope to see you guys there. I also wanted to just make a statement to Pastor Lila. Um, I think your idea and your concept is spot on, and I would encourage you to contact some of the organizations that are also headed in that direction, that your own direction, and get with them. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Williams?
I hope everyone is having a fabulous first week back to school, especially Councilwoman Nona Snoddy. I want to thank everyone that attended the back-to-school event and those organizers, uh, Youth Resources, my brother's keeper, Sassy Longview. It was really great, and I, I peeled my weight, myself, away from preseason football, uh, to attend, and it was well worth being there, so thank you. And, and I will say this as well, congratulations, um, to Lico for the new, and I'm not going to steal your thunder, Mayor, and the mayor, but thank you. Uh, Longview is looking up, and, and I'm just so fired up about the new jobs, and I'll be quiet now because the mayor is probably going to announce that, but, but, but it's really a great time, because people are always complaining. We get the phone calls sitting up here, "We need jobs." Well, we have some jobs. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. This is Yehara.
Nothing from me.
Mr. Wright?
Spring Hill, uh, High School will be, um, opening a new football field Friday night, and anybody who'd like to come and see the dedication, we'd love to have you.
Thank you. Mr. Purtle?
Uh, I personally got to witness some of the firemen this, this week and the medics do something to a family member of mine, and I wanted to thank, uh, Clint Stillman and Carl Robertson from Medic Five. Chief Stillman, they did a great job, and, um, they were compassionate, and, uh, they took care of business the right way, so I just want to let them guys know and let the fire department know, I appreciate them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Purtle. Mr. Bonds?
Well, Partners of Province will be hosting a new mentor training for the Forever Friends and the Co-Pilots Program on September 23rd. If you're interested in becoming a mentor to a child, please call Cindy Graham at 903-237-1015 to learn more and register for the training session. National Night Out kickoff event will be held on September 6th at 6:00 PM at Mon Cop Convention Center. Anyone interested in hosting a National Night Out block party is invited to attend. Downtown Live is returning to Heritage Plaza this fall. After a very successful spring series, the 100 acres of Heritage Board is expanding the event to include seven weeks in September and October. The Free Concert Series kicks off on September 9th with musician Levi Kitchen. And once again, I've said it many times, that is a fantastic way to go out and meet people and see your friends and neighbors and, um, enjoy the community. Continue to, um, post your things on our calendar. What's happening in Longview? Visit longviewtexas.com. It's really taking, uh, it's really, it's really catching on, and people are starting to see and, and come together so that we're starting to spread things out and not pile on top of each other, and that's really the whole purpose of this, to be able to spread things out through the community throughout the year and not have to miss events because we didn't look at a calendar to see who's doing what when. So thank you all for participating. We have the East Texas Regional, East Texas Regional Arts Exhibits at the London Museum of Fine Arts. The Mud Run at Lear Park is this weekend, I believe, isn't it, on Saturday? That's always a fun event. It's clean, clean fun. Clean fun. The Sharon Shrine Circus is coming up, the Gregg County Fair is coming up in September. That's always a great, uh, time for our community, and many, many more things that are taking place. Survey time. I can tell you, this has been the highest answered survey of the year so far. I didn't expect that. I was a little bit shocked. I, I thought we'd have a good response, but this has been the, uh, most responded survey thus far. And you can see, there's been a lot of speculation on what type of business would be best suited for the old Kmart building on McCann Road, fully realizing that government's job is not to dictate what businesses operate in our town or where they should be located. What type of business would you like to see operating in that place? And I can tell you, I'm impressed, and I hope, I hope people are listening. I hope the people with development skills and entrepreneurial aptitude and money to spend are listening, because there have been some great responses. I'll give you the percentages. A national grocery store, 31%. Office space, 2%. So if you're an office-based person, I wouldn't go and purchase that. That's not really what the citizens of Longview are looking for. I'm just, I'm going out on a limb here. You're not going to make a return on 2%, I can assure you. Uh, educational institution, 9%. Health food store, 15%. Other, 42%. And I had a zillion others, but the others are really interesting, and one of the main things that kept coming up was a skating rink, multifamily use-type facility. And, you know, you think about it, and, and I got thinking, and we've had skating rinks in town before that just didn't seem to pan out, but maybe because they were just limited to skating rink only. Maybe if someone would listen and do this multifamily-type use, multi-fun event center-type thing for kids and, and people of all ages, you never know. Another really interesting concept, uh, that I had been thinking about for a long time and wondering, would this not be a great place, not that I have any say-so, is some type of a technical school. You know, we have technical school in Marshall, but we don't have one in Longview. Wouldn't it be great to see all of our high schools participate in a centralized tech campus where all of the kids that are not college-bound could go and receive, uh, training to give us a really talented workforce for businesses and industry looking to locate here in Longview? What a great location that would be. So, schools, y'all think about that. Pay attention. Citizens of Longview have spoken. Uh, second one. If you had to compete in a relay event in the Olympics and partner with an Olympic athlete, who would you choose to be on your team? We know, poor Ryan, he didn't do well. Uh, 2%, and that was probably before the scandal came out. Um, this was really interesting. Michael Phelps, 28%. Usain Bolt, 31%. Simone Biles, 33%. Isn't that awesome? How cool would that be to, uh, be able to partner with one of those? What great athletes, what, what a great, um, representation of the United States during the Olympics that we had over in Rio. It makes me proud of our country, of those athletes that spend, that dedicate their lives to this, to this point, and I'm very proud of them and proud of the things that they accomplished for our, for our country. But, real quickly, back to the business survey. Let me say that one more time. The highest ranking survey of the year. So people do want to see something go into the Kmart building. We don't want another existing building to just be vacant. Uh, and it's great to have input on what potentials are out there, because when you have two people thinking about something, and you have thousands of people thinking about something, we end up with a whole lot more ideas, and that's what I appreciate, is the ideas that are coming through from our community. So thanks for participating. Our Go-Giver Fund, our Wheelchair Accessible Swings, once again, we had another good two weeks. Lots of checks came in. Uh, really nice donations from Tommy Turner, Texas Land Company, Brian Dahlberg, Cassia Williams. Thank you all for your participation. Uh, we, we also now have these brochures that we have printed out from the City of Longview, and these brochures, my good friend Ken Carter, who's actually sitting right back there, Ken is going to take these brochures and he's going to go door-to-door to solicit uh, funds for this donation, and, and let me just ask you, could you say no to that guy? I couldn't. I couldn't say no to that. So, Ken, thank you. So, Ken, thank you. I have the brochures up here. We wait on those, and I appreciate your desire to go out and do this for our community. Thank you very, very much. It means a lot. Book club. We have a video this week? Please.
In life, we all have choices. We can be positive, or we can be negative. There are not many things we can actually control in life, if you really think about it, but you can definitely control how you respond to each circumstance. One of my favorite hobbies is to people-watch. One of the best places to do that is in an airport. Recently, I was heading out of town. My flight was delayed, not by much, maybe an hour or so, but it was interesting to see how different people responded. One lady caused a scene by raising her voice at the gate attendant. I noticed one man who chose to take out his frustration by being less than kind to a lady who appeared to be his wife. And then, there was a mother traveling with small children by herself, who overheard telling her kids, "Lucky us, now we have time to enjoy an ice cream cone." Sure, I was disappointed and frustrated with the delay, as I was ready to reach my destination, but in the grand scheme of life, it was really not a big deal. I would hope next time that my irritation would turn to an opportunity for ice cream.
So, anybody read anything this week that they enjoyed?
I enjoyed your video. I have been that long before, and I have not offered ice cream and had a positive attitude.
I think we all have, and I think in times, especially stressful situations like airports, we're all stressed. Those are, those are really interesting times to see what people are really, what their real character is, but it is, it is good to know that, take a step back, realize that in the big picture, in the grand scheme of things, probably, probably not that big a deal. So, it was very interesting for me to have witnessed that, observe that, and just to try to apply that in my life, because I'm, I know this might come as a surprise to y'all, but I'm a pretty type-A personality. I'm on time or early to everything. If I'm, if I'm on time, I'm late, and so, those are things that I have to work on every day to realize that because that's my schedule doesn't mean that's anyone else's schedule around me, and it's a hard thing for me to do, and I have to really focus on that. But, these little things help me to realize that in the big scheme, that extra time is really not that important. So, it has been very beneficial for me, so I hope y'all are seeing things as well. Anyone else have some comments on that? Let me ask you a question. Have y'all seen the concept of the shark and the goldfish? You understand what it is? For those of y'all that haven't read the book or haven't joined in, and by the way, we're having exceptional Monday night discussion. It's just, it's just outstanding how the citizens have continued to be involved and engage. But, the basic concept is hot between the shark and the goldfish is, the goldfish is the one that sits in the bowl and waits for food to come to him, to be fed. The shark is the one that goes out and finds his own food. And it couldn't be any more appropriate this week, because we have a LEDCO board that are sharks, and they went out and they found some food. And I can tell you, I am extremely proud of this group of people that have taken it upon themselves to go out and do something for our community. They could sit back and wait for something to happen. They could have sat back and waited for an executive director to show up and take the lead, but they did not. They've been in office less than eleven months now, and that eleven, in ten-plus months, they've gone out and they've done something. They became proactive. They became productive, and I am, I am so overwhelmed at what they were able to accomplish without an executive director, so it just, it makes me wonder, what are we in for now with such a great board and an amazing executive director who is so in tune to what is going on in our community? So, I just want to take a minute to commend Peggy Vaughn, Connor Cupid, Randy Peters, Ray Wade, and Lester Lucy, the five voting members of LEDCO who spearheaded this endeavor and went out and found a company and brought them here to Longview, and they're going to provide six hundred jobs for our community. And that might not seem like a lot to you all, but in my calculations, we haven't had a company come and bring six hundred jobs to Longview, and I know over ten years, almost since Eastman. I know Dana came, and Dana got up to seven fifty at one point, but they dropped off quickly, and then they, they left. So, this is a significant event for our community. Six hundred jobs means six hundred families, which means six hundred more people in our community that are able to provide for their families, buy school supplies, go eat in restaurants, shop in our stores. It also means that they'll have benefits from a company that will provide insurance benefits for these people that will also benefit the community. So, this is a significant event, and I don't want it to be taken lightly, but I want to take the time to commend LEDCO and the board and what they've done, because this, this is, it is, it's what we're looking for. Granted, these probably aren't the highest-paying jobs in the world, but you know what? To those people that need a job, it's plenty. It's plenty. And so, don't downplay that, because for those people that are having trouble making ends meet, these jobs provide security for their families, and I'm very thankful for this and for the company that, Nation Star, that trusted Longview and sees what we see, and that's the best community in Texas. And so, I think this is the first of many to come. I think this is the tip of the iceberg, so hats off to LEDCO board and to you all for supporting them. Kristen was on there with the liaison last year with them. David is now the liaison. I just appreciate the time and effort spent, and I look forward to a lot of great things ahead. Yes, please. With that, we are adjourned.